The SWAT team's coming in.
Charlie was good at those sorts of things. Charlie was a master.
Perry would hear the engine.
But I took over with Charlie. Just Charlie killed for eleven minutes. My first budget meeting. I understand Chief Runge was looking for help. What is your position? What?
Okay, all right, yeah.
I saw Charlie later and he says, "I always tried to give him some red meat."
First question.
I wasn't frightened.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is six o'clock and as mayor, I hereby call to order this special meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for this time and date to further hear budget presentations. Tonight on our agenda is a presentation from Recreation and Facilities and my pleasure to recognize our new director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities, Amy Levesque.
Thank you very much for having me.
Pull that microphone right over to you and stand right in front of it, perfect.
Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. I would like to first take the time to thank you for having me. I appreciate this and please bear with me because it is my first time.
Can I jump in one second if I could, Amy?
Already?
She inherited this budget, so Kevin and I put this together, so feel free to take some shots at me rather than just at Amy tonight, but she's done a great job owning it, but it wasn't her original creation, so.
I think trial by fire is better.
That's why I told her she had to, right?
Wow. All right, well, thank you for that. I'd also like to thank two of our commissioners, our Parks and Recreation Commissioners for coming, Deanna Guyer and Rod Roy. Also, Tim Ford is here, he is our foreman and here to help me with any questions you might have specifically of turf maintenance. And I was about to thank Kevin for preparing the budget for me, but you took care of that for me. All right. So this is basically what we're going to go through. Just an introduction, let you know how our park is being used, just about parks and recreation themselves, turf maintenance, seasonal employment, gardens, CIP, and recreation. Then we'll go into some questions. So we are, hopefully, the department that produces smiles. See, look, it already happened. We hope that when people think of parks and recreation, they actually do smile. They think of a, they think of beaches. And smile. They think of our parks and smile. And then they think of recreation. You're welcome, Glenn, for this picture. This is Glenn's daughter, by the way. Recreation. We at Laconia Parks and Recreation strive to provide safe, fun places to play in our parks, athletic fields, and beaches, as well as opportunities to recreate throughout the year. So this is how our park is used. We have had eighty-six facility use requests as of the end of May. That does not include June. So there will be more for the fiscal year 2019. Eighty-six events does not mean just eighty-six events. It means Laconia Little League has put in one and they take up a lot of space for a lot of kids. Use soccer, same thing. Muskrats, same thing. So just because it says eighty-six doesn't mean eighty-six events. We, at the two softball tournaments that are held in the summer, they bring in literally thousands of people into our community and we get compliments constantly. We are not the only facility that they use, however, they compliment us on our facilities. The NHIA specifically requests our facilities, specifically Robbie Mills, for the semifinal games, and they were on the news if you didn't notice. So we do get a lot of publicity and, in my opinion, we have amazing facilities. So we have about a thousand organized youth sports players. That is literally just your little leagues, your football, your soccer, that type of a thing, lacrosse. It does not include the adult softball. It doesn't include middle school sports teams. It doesn't include high school sports teams. And it does not include the teams that come in to play against us in Laconia. And it also doesn't include your normal Joe Schmo everyday recreation person. But our facilities are widely used. To show you what we have, we have twenty parks, nine cemeteries, five beaches, fifteen athletic fields, thirteen courts, nine playgrounds, nine city buildings, and twenty-seven, what I called, extra areas.
Can you give us, for instance, an extra area?
Watch this. I sure can. Ask and you shall receive.
Fastball right down the middle.
Here we go. Here are just some of our extra areas. They can be anything from the police department, the fire department, but it's not necessarily a park, so that's why it's an extra building. So the high school upper bankings, we maintain. The lower field at the high school. Messer Street corner. Tyler Street Diamond. And Pine Street Islands, just to name a couple of the things that aren't normally in the realm where you would think it would be Parks and Rec, but we do maintain them. Normally, we do mow and trim all areas as needed. We'll do them biweekly, we'll do them weekly, and we will do them two to three times per week. That's usually an athletic field that's requiring that. I will explain the, why I put "normally" on there shortly. So here's our numbers. I had to put some numbers and I watched the other people. I thought I'd had to put some in there. It's just, it's, it's huge if you, if you think about it. We mow weekly twenty-eight point five acres. I'm not going to get into the square footage because I'm not going to play that game. But you can see from the slide that we do maintain quite a bit. And where we fertilize does not mean the weekly areas. I will get into that as well, but we are only paying two point five cents per square foot, which is a great amount that we, that we pay. So our turf maintenance program is very strong. We strive for athletic fields to be safe and consistent so players know what to expect. And they are lovely. We do know, though, that we have some work to do still, such as clover. Wear and tear in our goal areas, this is difficult to fight against, but not impossible. We also have some bald spots. These types of things are ongoing problems that don't go away after one year of treatment. These are issues that we have year after year. We have to treat them with fertilizer, aeration, overseeding, and other treatment as needed. We're mostly organic community for our parks and athletic fields. This is something we strongly believe in for Laconia. This is the reason for the increase in our grounds maintenance account, and I will go over that at the end of the presentation in your budget book. So at twenty-five different parks and athletic fields, we take soil samples every fall. The soil is tested for pH, organic matter, phosphorus, potassium, and minor nutrients such as magnesium, calcium, and sulfur, as well as many others. Did you have a question? When the results are in, they are interpreted to determine what our soil needs for that year, or I should say the upcoming year. Again, each year and each facility is different. And this can be the result. And I just wanted to give you an FYI, that our irrigation is not quite up yet. Mother Nature's been kind enough to us with the natural water. Some think it's nice, ducks love it, but it's kept us from having to turn our irrigation on. We will turn it on when the signs show that we need to. Just wanted to give you that information.
Are you talking about Memorial Park here, or what are you talking about?
I'm talking about everywhere that has irrigation at this point.
Which is where?
Oh, my goodness.
All our fields.
Opichi.
Opichi.
Rotary, Stewart, Robbie Mills, Fabotis, they're going to list them all for us, but mostly the athletic fields, and downtown has some. But Memorial is starting work tomorrow. So seasonal employees, on the good news side, our Bond Beach attendants are hired, beach supervisor is hired, and we do have two enforcement employees hired. However, the bad news is we currently only have one full-time maintenance employee and one part-time out of eight that we could potentially have. And this is causing strain on, as you saw earlier, what we have to do. So that is an issue. We also had, have had zero applicants for lifeguards this year. Not even somebody who may not even be qualified as of yet, but not even an applicant.
Nobody coming back?
Not one person coming back. I didn't have many last year as well.
So what's the effect of that?
The effect of that is the beaches will be posted saying, "Swim at your own risk." And that's all. Absolutely, and you're still able to swim, you're still able to do all the things you wanted to do, it's just there's no lifeguards at the, at the facility.
What about the surrounding communities? What have you found out from them?
Well, it's kind of strange. Guilford had most people coming back, so they didn't have the shortage that I did. And strangely enough, Concord, when I contacted them, they are completely full. Now, they contributed that to the fact that they are paying for the, the class. So the class is about four hundred dollars, and the city here decided that that would be a, that would be a fine idea to try and entice people to come and work for us. So we instituted the same thing, and we didn't get anyone. So Concord has a full, full staff, and they assumed, and it's the first time in years, she had said, they hadn't been fully staffed in ten years. But she said she attributed it to the fact that they are paying for the, the, the class itself.
But we're doing that also.
We are doing that also, and it has not helped us.
And that's part of our job application? That's part of our job application process or our advertisement?
It was part of our advertisement.
What's the salary?
It was eleven dollars an hour, which was competitive.
What's Concord paid?
Ten seventy-five.
I wonder, I just wonder why that is. I'm baffled by that.
Well, I'll tell you what I've done. How's that? So we have competitive wages. I've attended one job fair where our public works director attended another's. We've done flyers in Laconia Links and in the high schools, the local high schools. We've literally made flyers for each of the job postings that we have, and they've put them up. We've done multiple newspaper ads. We have another one going out this coming, this week. I've contacted two local swim teams, and I've contacted two university swim teams. We've added the reimbursement for the lifeguard training course. And I contacted at the, in the, in the winter, I contacted the wellness complex and asked them to do a training so that our kids had a place up here to take a course, thinking that the distance from here to Concord might be a deterrent for them. And they did, they offered multiple trainings, and I still didn't get one. So I was at a loss myself, to be honest. I, I, I do not know the answer to why it's happened.
Can we back up just a little? How long have we been down? Six or seven people for maintenance workers?
What do you mean, how long have we been down?
Well, what you got here is we currently have only one full-time and one part-time maintenance workers out of eight? How long have we been down that minute?
Well, since the beginning of spring. So we start in April.
Okay. Those are seasonal full-time positions as opposed to year-round full-time positions? Are we suffering the same kind of full-time year-round positions?
No, we still have our, our full-timers.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Were you able to interview?
No, I'm just holding, see now, it's okay, Amy.
Were you able to interview any of the lifeguards that did not come back to find out why?
I did not, actually. I can do that, actually. I, I, I had one that moved over to, who wanted to work with a day camp, so I can ask her.
So apart from Concord just saying, "We attribute it to paying for the jobs," that's the best explanation we can get, right? I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming anybody. I mean, we advertise and nobody comes. We have some really nice beaches here.
We have beautiful beaches.
You know? It's not like, you know, Concord doesn't compare, sorry.
They're all pools.
Yeah.
Concord has all pools, yes.
Maybe that's the secret, I don't know.
Maybe. I don't know the answer.
Do you have a feel for, Amy, for what the attendance is at the various beaches versus historic numbers? In other words, how many people are using Bond Beach versus used to use it? How many people are using Bartlett Beach compared to past years? Anything like that?
So we've never taken actual numbers like that. However, I can tell you from when I started about twenty years ago to what's going on recently, it used to be that our beaches were packed. Every beach that you went to, there were a number of people on it, didn't matter which beach it was. It was the, it was Bartlett, it was the Cove, it was the Point, Bond, or Weers. I have seen a significant decrease in the time that I've been here, to a point that we no longer guard, Opichi Cove for one reason or the other, and Bartlett Beach, we do not even guard at the, at all at that facility.
How about the use of Opichi Point?
Well, Opichi Point is well-used on the weekdays. We have three different day camps that use that facility on the weekdays. On the weekends, it's not very busy. And the exact opposite happens at Bond Beach. Bond Beach is relatively quiet during the weekdays and steadily increases on the weekends.
Have you given any thought to the, to the possibility we have too many?
Too many beaches?
Given demand? That we're maintaining too many?
No, I've never given that a thought. Do you want to take a beach?
And don't.
Excuse me. Did you have any other questions about seasonal employees? So like I had mentioned, that it will make a diff, for a difficult summer, we will prioritize our maintenance to highly visible parks, plant beds, athletic fields, that will get the most attention. And our less visible parks or plant beds, cemeteries, will get less frequent attention than they normally would. This also will cause delays in the non-emergency requests that we do get. On a brighter note, we maintain flower beds that are not adopted through the Adopt a Spot program. We also take ownership over others, just because we don't want them adopted. We like to take them. Couple of the capital improvements that we have asked for. One is the Bartlett Beach Drainage Improvement Construction Phase. We have done the plan for it, and this is to alleviate the erosion that we're having at the beach. Currently, this year, we are working on the Bond Beach project, and next year, we are asking for Bartlett Beach. It would be a mostly parking lot-related area that we are maintaining, or that we are going to be constructing there, because that's where most of our erosion happens, at Bartlett Beach. We're also asking for playground revitalization money. A four-by-four dump truck with crew cab and a four-by-four pickup truck with a plow. So for recreation, our recreation programming is constantly changing and growing with the trends. We strive to meet all community needs, and we are going to keep expanding. In 2018, 2019, we provided sixty different types of programs for all different ages and abilities. Now, this can mean Jazzercise, for instance, which meets ten times a week at the community center. So it's not just, again, sixty. And over forty individual usages of those programs, forty thousand, sorry. But we can be doing more. So new programs that I think would be really nice addition to our area would be Ultimate Frisbee. A pickleball tournament. Pickleball's huge, I'm just saying. And a middle school age day camp during the summer, and many more ideas. These are just to name a couple. Most programs that I listed above and current programs are self-sustained, meaning revenue will come in to cover the cost of the program and will not come out of the operating budget. We charge for most programs, except for some special events such as the Easter Egg Hunt, Cardboard Sled Racing, senior, senior prom, but our goal is to remain low in cost and high in quality. Just a couple pictures for you. The Easter Egg Hunt this past year. Cardboard Sled Racing. Opichi Day Camp. They look like they're having fun, don't they? The senior, senior prom. Fourth of July Celebration. So at this point, I would love for you to take a look at your packets. So the Recreation Facilities budget side is on page one fourteen of your booklet. And again, most notable is the increase that we've asked for, or I should say Scott has asked for, for the grounds maintenance account, and that has increased by five thousand dollars just to show historically that we do use that significantly. Any questions on that one? Then we go through the, the three departments or the three buildings that we maintain, City Hall, Community Center, and the Police Department. City Hall and Community Center are staying roughly the same. A little increase here and there for fuel and things like that. However, the Police Department does have a significant increase for the building. Apparently, we have some, some building issues and we have to keep it, we have to keep it maintained. So we have the AC units working alongside the heating units.
This is a humidity problem?
This is for humidity. Exactly. So it's, it's, it's showing up in this budget here. That's the reason for the, the increases there. Any questions on any of those? Yes?
I'll start, I'll start.
Hi, thank you. So I, I just wanted to go back to the maintenance grounds.
Yes.
So if I'm reading this correctly, you requested fifty thousand dollars, which would have been level funded between eighteen and nineteen, but say manager is going up recommending a five thousand dollar increase in that. That's because of what you're using on the fields?
Historic.
Or using more, is that it? I've just missed that.
Well, pretty much.
I was trying to catch up with the numbers and you were talking about it.
I'm sorry.
So I may have just completely missed it.
Some of it is just cost of the materials and trying to do a little bit more of an organic program does have cost to it. And part of it, if you look into the columns in the prior years, our historical actually was that we were spending into the low sixties in three out of the four years. So sometimes when we work, when I work with department heads and I let them know what the CPI is for any given year, I say, you know, the salaries and the benefits, you can't really control, we'll calculate those, but on your operating side, you know, come in at around two percent of those were the marching orders. So in some cases, they're prioritizing maybe some other line items, they're willing to level fund. When I went through that particular line item with Kevin, I said, you know, this is a, a desire of the counselors in general, you've heard about field quality and that type of maintenance, and it's important to them, and our historical numbers are there, so let's put five thousand more and I'll find a way to work that into the overall budget.
And Amy, did I hear you correctly say we're, are we completely organic in what we're using to fertilize, or?
We are mostly organic. I will call Tim up for that question.
We are organic in the aspect.
Can you use the mic, Tim, please?
We are organic in the aspect that everything we're trying to use is natural, but when you have a product like Yurea, which is not a hundred percent natural, it's kind of man-made, so that takes that away from being a hundred percent. We don't use any chemicals to spray on any of the fields, any pesticides or anything like that, so we have to find ways around it to accomplish that goal.
Is, is this, is that rare in the state, or is it fairly common, what you're doing? I mean, it seems extraordinary that.
It's, it's getting more popular.
Yeah. That's great.
I have a question while you're there, Tim. The clover. And, you know, if they're not mowed for a little over a week or more and the flowers come out, it looks like white top. What's the organic solution to that? Because i- if you don't control that, then the grass is gone, and we spend a lot of money for turf.
Right. What the, what the clover is telling us is that that ground needs more nitrogen. So what our plans are, is to give it more of that nitrogen. It's also, we're going to go through and overseed with it so that that cuts up the clover, put seed in, and then the grass will come up around it. And then in time, the ni, more nitrogen will eliminate the clover.
Okay, because the clover's been winning. Robbie Mills, the, the soccer field.
Sure has.
Levitt Park, in a big way.
What's the status of the Levitt Park field, from, in your opinion?
It's a very good recreational field.
But what's the condition of the turf?
The turf? Like Mr. Hamill was saying, there is a lot of clover on it. There are spots of gray turf in it, and there are spots of clover on it. Is it, in my opinion, bad? I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there.
I wouldn't either, but.
But you're absolutely correct, clover is a problem.
Pushes out the grass.
There's a, I won't call it a growing, but there's a lot of sentiment that clover is not such a bad thing, you know?
You are absolutely correct with that. And it depends on where it is at. I mean, if it's, if it's off in the, what we call the fringe areas around the fields, we're not too worried about that. When it's on the field, then, then we kind of worry whether or not the clover's going to bring a bee in or, or sting somebody that way, so we have problems, and the leaves can make it a little more slipperier for people to run on. So that's where we run into the problems with that.
You know, I'm not a groundskeeper, I don't, I don't have a lot of knowledge about that, but there's just, seems to be a lot of sentiment in terms of yards and stuff like that. The clover is just not the bad thing, and you don't have to have Kentucky grass all over the place.
It's a weed.
Well, I, I think the difference is that there's a difference between your lawn, like my lawn or whatever, and a athletic playing field.
I, I'm not, I'm just commenting, I'm not suggesting one way or another, I'm just.
Clover will not take the abuse that grass can on these fields, and they're used morning to night. They got lights, they run at night.
I'll leave that decision to the experts.
Thank you, Tim.
Any other questions on that side? No? All right. One last thing. Sorry. Is the capital improvement plan. It's on page thirteen of your book. So we have asked for, and I've already explained it to you, the, the four different, four different pieces to that. I did want to draw your attention to the fact that the four-by-four pickup truck, it was put into your booklet saying that we are replacing our current truck, that is our plow truck. However, we are not planning on replacing that truck. We are replacing it as the lead plow truck, but we do not wish to release the truck. It is in great repair for being a 2006, and it's definitely needed in the summers if we have seasonal employees to work for us, to have that extra vehicle. Our dump trunk, however, is being replaced, that you are, you see the four-by-four dump truck with a crew cab. That is actually replacing one of our-
So you're going to have one, plus one vehicle?
We would be a plus one. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware that, of that change. And that is all I had. I wanted to say thank you for your continued support, and now questions.
Counselor Hamel.
One question. It would be under your facilities. And I'll bring it up now so that we can discuss it when there's time to, time for us to discuss the budget.
What page are you on, Tom?
13. Under facilities, the Police Department requested carpet to be replaced for $23,000. And I went over there a month or so ago and did a tour of the building, and the hallways are all pretty much coming apart. They're all wrinkled. It's unglued or what, the backing for the rug let go or whatever. But all the hallways are in that condition. Couple of the rooms that have been used extensively are in that same condition, and there's quite a few joints where you go into a room from the hallway where the seam is that, they're frayed and, and in terrible condition. A lot of the rooms are okay. So what I'd like to do is, I don't know if you want to have a motion to do this, or-
I think that's premature. We'll get it on a list.
Yeah. Well, what I want to do is make a suggestion that we take the $23,000 from the non-capital reserve account, which has $191,806 in it right now, and put that towards those rugs. And only replace the areas that need to be replaced. So if it doesn't, you know, the $23,000 is, I would say, would be the not to exceed.
So we're starting our list that we'll get to on the 24th?
Yes.
You know, where she's talking about the facility, I thought I'd just-
That's fine.
Bring that up.
We just, we'll compose a list of-
Yeah. And if any of you have a chance to go over-
Changes that, to the budget that are being proposed, and we'll discuss those on the 24th.
Yep. So I'm just bringing it up now so that we know.
That's fine.
So that item we'll, we'll definitely bring forward as a request. It wouldn't necessarily be a part of the budget that you're adopting, because those funds are already sitting there in the non-capital reserve account.
Okay.
So it could be an item that the council chooses to fund, that isn't going to be funded by next year's budget, but they're existing dollars.
So that wouldn't free up $23,000 in the budget?
No, because it was not funded. I didn't, it was requested, but it was not funded in this budget.
All requested, but not funded. Okay.
But I mean, if we still have time to put that in?
The dollars are sitting there, so it doesn't have to be part of next year's budget, because the funds are already in the bank. You could, you could make that motion tomorrow, and it would be ready to go.
It's not part of the operating budget.
Okay. Kind of like what we've done in the past, that we just pick some items off the CIP list and brought them to the top.
Yeah, I think when we looked back last year, we had a couple of, we had some money from sale of a property that we funded, the Sally Port door replacement, and we put some money towards-
Sprinkler system, though.
Sprinklers, and I think the sprinklers we found within the budget, but we did. We moved up San Burton basketball, Sanborn Park basketball, park resurfacing, because we were already coming in to do the two others, and it made sense to piggyback, so we used some of those existing dollars like you're speaking of, of here.
Okay. I just wanted the council to be aware that I'd, I'd like to put that on the table when it comes time to talk about it.
So you're adding an expenditure, is what you're suggesting, and taking the money out of our reserve account?
I guess you could say that. Yep.
Any other questions for Amy?
Yes. There is, I, I don't know if this is your department, the State Department, or whose jurisdiction there is, but if you look at where the Canal Street canal comes out into the Winnipesaukee River, there is a huge buildup of milfoil there, and I don't know what we do about it, what the state does about it, what, what's-
At the, at what point? I didn't catch where.
Where the Canal Street canal empties out into the Winnipesaukee River, which is just below the bridge.
I did get a phone call.
Pearl Lake Canal.
Yeah. I'm talking about Pearl Lake Canal.
I did get a phone call about this. I'll wait.
I thought I shut that off. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I, I did get a phone call about that situation, and I did let the New Hampshire DES know about that situation, and they have it on their radar to check into that.
So who is, that's in the special items budget, right? The milfoil?
We have milfoil general. So we work with New Hampshire DES, and it's really a one-person department for the most part, Amy Smagula. And she does a lot of the mapping and identifying of milfoil for bodies of water around the state, and that's who we submit our request in for-
Who on our staff works with him?
That would be the planning department, the conservation tech.
Okay. So that's the answer to Doc, to Counselor Bounce's question.
We'll, we'll make sure that, that, that spot for milfoil is identified specifically, so when they do the mapping of it, that can be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Okay, thank you for your first shot. Oops.
But I have one, one comment.
One comment.
This is Amy's first time in front of the council, and I want to congratulate her for-
Thank you.
-her promotion.
Thank you very much.
It's a great thing for you, and I'm glad for you.
I appreciate that.
Counselor Hamel speaks for us all. Congratulations. And I also want to thank Tim and Rod and Deanna for attending tonight also. Appreciate your being here.
As do I.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Enter business to come before the meeting tonight. If not, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at 6:35, and we'll reconvene at 7:00.